The United States of America and to the Republic of America's hands, one nation under God, in the municipal with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call in just a sec here.
Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Cassidy.
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox.
Present.
Councilmember Julia Stubble.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Present.
You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Glad to see you here. We love having company in our meetings. Reminder, if you've not been here for a bit, please make sure you silence your cell phones. And if you find yourself needing to have a conversation, please move to the outside. And you probably actually want to move ways away from the hall. There's odd acoustics that even whispering in here is quite distracting. And the way the acoustics work outside, if you're near that door, it still ventures into the room. But we're always glad to have you here with us. Thank you. So council, moving on to item number two, could I get a motion in a second for approval of the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Any questions or amendments needed for the agenda?
Yeah, how come you my microphone made me move over?
We're trying to pull you out from the corner, John. You're still kind of hidden.
Yeah, okay.
All right, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Great, motion passes. We have a number of public hearings tonight. First one, public hearing, starting at 6:02 PM on the budget amendment. And Shari, we'll turn this over to you, please.
This is just shoring up last year's budget for a few unanticipated revenues and expenditures in some departments that had some overages. I stem for any questions.
So council will leave our conversations about these topics for when they're voting agendas. But I do want to welcome if there's any public comment about this. Okay, seeing none. We'll close at 6:03. And then start the next one. Opening the public hearing regarding ordinance 25 dash 2025 dash six, replacing ordinances 8:42, 8:54, 10:15, and establishing comprehensive regulations for the public and private community forest in Lander. We'll open it at 6:03. So Lance, I think this is falling to you for some background.
Yeah, I think that we've talked about this at work sessions. And so this has been across your desk and discussed a couple of times in Stanford Questions on the ordinance replacement.
Then likewise for council, we'll wait until it's a voting item. But if anyone from the public would like to comment on it, please come up and approach the microphone. Yeah. Lance, would you be able to give us a brief overview about? I don't want you to read the whole thing. That would be exorbitant.
Yeah, I guess if we wanted to have somebody from the tree board talk about it in more detail, is that what you guys would like to hear and in greater discussion? Or what would you like to hear?
Well, I was just thinking rather than ordinance number, that if there's somebody in the community that might want to know just the why we're doing that.
Yeah. Councilmember Stubble as a liaison could provide some info.
Sure, thanks. I'll do a bit of an overview here. We did have a work session at the end of June on this with really robust discussion and incorporated some edits in from council people and your review. So thank you for those. These, it's a bit of a housekeeping exercise. We have three ordinances on the books right now governing the public and private community forests. And those are redundant. There's some repetition. There's confusion in processes because of that, and they're getting a bit outdated, frankly. So this is an attempt to repeal and replace the three ordinances that we have right now and create one much more understandable, easily usable ordinance that doesn't add substantive authorities for the city to take action. It's the same authorities we have on the books right now. But we've created some up-to-date processes, a bit more clarity about who does what, where and where, and how we make a process that can allow an advisory board to identify where there are hazardous trees in either city of Lander properties or on private properties that would pose a danger to the public. And the board can identify those, bring them to the city for review, which is a check and balance for city staff to then go out, have an arborist take a look, verify if that actually is a hazardous tree with a safety issue or not. And then there's a process to take steps to advise the property owner if that need for them to remove that hazard. And then steps taken if that property owner is unable or unwilling to do so. So it's a process in place right now, but we've clarified, I think, some roles and made clear that it is advisory for the tree board itself. And they have other duties in here as well, you know, doing annual plans for the types of trees that we want to have on the public domain and keeping an eye on the health of our forests around town. Is there any other context?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Great summary. Thank you. So with that, any public comment of interest?
Thank you. My name's Brett Berg. This is the first I've heard of this. I'm wondering, is there a copy of this ordinance available for review? If so, where do I get that? Copy of the ordinance? Is this first reading? Are we going to have two more readings before it gets voted on? I'm not sure because I haven't been paying attention where we're at in this process.
Yeah, so although we don't typically respond back to public comment, those are great questions asked. So this is the first reading for it. And it's available in the council packet for this week's meeting. And we can also email you this specific one. You don't have to go through the whole council packet for it if you'd like to be able to review in whole.
So if I call City Hall tomorrow and ask them to email it to me, that can happen?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Also on our website.
Oh, and I don't, yes, our clerk also mentioned it's on our website. So you can see it there right now if you'd like. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the meeting 6:07. And then open. Public hearing ordinance 2025 dash seven, amending Title 12, City Administrative Precisions, Section 12 dash 5 dash 5, compensation of officers and employees of the Lander Municipal Code. And Rochelle, we'll turn that to you for information.
As previously discussed, this updates the Title 12 of the municipal code. The first paragraph changes Lander personnel rules to policy and procedural manual and managerial guidelines because that's what we call our documents now. At some point, the title of them were changed. So we were going to change this particular section if felt appropriate to go ahead and update it to the current terms that are used. And that will have to be changed in the ordinance. I got it in the notice that went to the paper, but the ordinance itself, A, didn't get changed. So for the second reading, we'll make sure that happens. In B, we clarified that council members get paid for meetings they attend as a liaison. In C, again, we just updated the language from step and grade scale, which isn't used anymore, to salary structure table, which is. But the real change comes with E. This says, "Any elected or appointed officers who are entitled to receive a salary or compensation under this section may elect not to receive all or a portion of the salary or compensation at any time during their term in accordance with Wyoming Statute, Section 152103, as it may be amended." And that aligns with Wyoming State Statute as it was a change allowing elected officials to waive pay for attending meetings. And that came as a result of a request by Councilmember Cassidy. So any questions for me?
Thank you for that overview of it. And we'd welcome any public comment at this time. Okay, seeing none. We'll close the hearing at 6:10. We've got one more public hearing. We'll open that at 6:10. Public hearing ordinance 2025 dash eight, granting a franchise to Visionary Communications LLC on behalf of itself and its affiliates, Visionary, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system, quote, "system" in the city of Lander, Wyoming. And Rochelle or Lance, I'm not sure. Lance, I'm guessing this is you. You're more of our franchise.
Yes, this is just standardizing our agreements with our franchises within our right of ways to be able to use the right of way, but appropriately make sure that we're standard as far as what we bill, what we charge. And we've reviewed these documents for completeness and accuracy for today's standards. So you're seeing the first reading for Visionary. There'll be future franchises to come as we're still working through the process on those.
Thank you for that. Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none. We'll close that public hearing at 6:11. And then move on to communication from the floor. This is an opportunity for public comment. Please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments will be limited to three minutes. If anyone would like to come forward, this is your opportunity.
Madam Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Dwayne Ellis. I live at 885 Four Seasons Drive, currently where the new Propoja Park is, right across the street. It's come to some concern, not only as a resident there on behalf of renting through Stone Management, but there's some changes that are coming through the Parks Department. Not only within where my residence is, but where my girlfriend is as well, just to the north of that. We're from what we were told eight days ago that the city is now purchasing that property, which is not necessarily within writing, but that we're supposed to vacate within by the end of September. And so I'm just trying to get clarification where the city is with the Parks Department with that because we've not received anything verbal from Stone Management and just trying to figure it out. The other concern that I have is the amount of traffic within that area. That is a private road. It is maintained by Stone Management. When the city started to do Lincoln Street and closed off Second Street, the amount of traffic that came through that park, through that area, more than tripled, if not quadrupled, which the city did nothing to help maintain the roads. The one thing I'll give kudos to the police department, they came through all the time just trying to get people to slow down because it's 10 mile an hour, but people are just trying to get around that area. And so just trying to figure out where the vision is with the city and timing with purchasing of that property, which I'm not trying to impose anything on Stone Management to deal with their own property, which that's not who I am. But on the same side, the timing that we have is concerning, not only for displacing Ms. Gordon, but her daughter and three other low-income properties that are within that area that they want to put a shop up for. And so that's concerning. And again, the other part is that I have is why, you know, with the city and trying to house people, is they're taking three properties and talking with the management is they had already purchased, were in the process of purchasing two homes where there are two empty lots that they had. And then the city came in and said they wanted to purchase that property and they were able to get that out, to get out from under those purchases. But again, the vagueness of this and the vagueness from the property owner to where we're at and the immediate, hey, we got to figure it out quick. And it just, it seems shady.
Yeah, thank you for your concerns. It would be great if we could find a time to talk one-on-one and fill you in on some of the details.
Okay, yeah, when can we commit to a time for that?
I'm happy if you can send me an email and we can figure out a time to talk.
Okay, appreciate you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else for a public comment?
Apologies. Sorry about that. My name is Coleman Griffith. I live at 980 North First Street. And I'm actually, it's in the same vicinity. I'm actually just over the back fence from that piece in question. And I do apologize for, I normally wouldn't be here on rumor and hearsay, but my neighbors do seem to have it on good authority that this sale is going through. And I do notice that there is a property fitting that description up for discussion tonight. My concerns, again, are similarly along the lines for my neighbors here. I'm not opposed to that Propoja Park. I really like parks. I think when I travel, things that really make a community stand out to me is having a nice, big, developed park space. But I know also that Lander struggles with affordable housing. I've made my thoughts on that known in the past as well. And I appreciate the need for doing business and real estate deals kind of quietly. But there is a limit to that. And I hope, I hope this doesn't come as a surprise to you guys. I hope you guys do have some plans to prevent from forcing somebody to move and they aren't looking to do so. Whatever public good we would get from expanding a park slightly doesn't balance against causing someone to have to move against their will. And my neighbors have done, they're modest, but they've done a lot of work in that property. They're good landowners. They've cleaned a lot. They've landscaped. They've put up some big gardens. We really can't be displacing people like that, even for, I mean, land adjacent to a park for sale. That's pretty, pretty good. And it's a little strange for me to be up here maybe even saying this because my property probably is more valuable if it butts a park instead of a trailer court. But it is that displacement issue. And I hope you guys do have, reach out early and often because these are, these are not issues that need to be addressed via rumor mill. So I'll leave that, you guys with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to mayor and council update, starting with Councilman Josh Han.
I don't have much. I had an owner of a business come with a liquor license and they were asking me a question about Sundays. State statute changed on being open until 2:00 in the morning on Sundays. And with the state statute changing to that, what is the city or county policy? Is it, does it go to the state or does it go to the city that the business resides in?
I don't think I could provide that answer off the top of my head.
Okay.
And Rochelle, do you have any more information about if state says you can be open until 2:00 AM? My understanding is we, the city can be more restrictive than state statute, but I don't know that we are.
Our current code is 2215, which says, "Except as specifically provided by resolution, the city council, all liquor licensees shall be controlled by the following operating hours. On all days, a licensee may open the building at 6:00 AM and close the building and see sale of both alcoholic and malt beverages promptly at 2:00 AM."
So they can remain open until?
2:00 AM.
On a Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be able to give them an answer. That's all I have, Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Stubble.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to provide an update on the liaison appointments that we hold as council members. We've done a little shuffling in order to welcome Councilman Cassidy to our ranks. And so usually you'll recall, formerly known as council presidents, now mayor pro temps, make these decisions for two-year terms in January. And so our esteemed former council president Cox made assignments for us for this year. And so I'm doing a mid-year shuffle, which is rare here. But these will be terms, liaison appointments for July 2025 until December 2026. And shouldn't be a surprise to any council members. I appreciate the conversations we've had together. So I'll just run through the list and name who that liaison is now. Chamber of Commerce remains Councilwoman Cox. The golf course board is now Councilman Cassidy. The Housing Authority Board, this actually is a staff and mayor appointment when needed. The Lander Old Timers Rodeo Association has shifted from Councilman Josh Han, who's indicated a pretty packed schedule and so desire not to have liaison appointments. Councilman Dan Han has taken on the Lotra. Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments, a pretty heavy lift. There is Councilman Cassidy and Councilman Dan Han. The Propoja Conservation District remains Councilman Larson. The Senior Center Board, also Councilman Larson. Urban Systems, which meets only when needed every few years, will be in my vote. The Energy and Environment Task Force, I'll also remain the liaison for. Board of Appeals, called when needed. We haven't actually gotten the Board of Appeals together. And so given that's ad hoc, I'll stay on that. The Fremont County Solid Waste Board, Councilman Larson. Thank you for taking on three on that. The Lander Economic Development Association leader shall be Councilwoman Cox. And Mayor Missy White. And the Lander Urban Forest Council, surprise, it's still me. Lucky me with these two in the room. And then we have decided, lots of conversation around this, that the Fremont County School District, number one, we used to send a liaison from the council to that school board meetings. And we didn't find that there's a lot of relevant crossover business. So that's a relationship that the mayor can have with the superintendent and with the board chair and the staff maintain. Right now, a police chief and public works director is handling the SRO conversations, you know, safety projects and parks and rec needs. So didn't see a need to have a council person attending the school district board as a formal liaison going forward. I'll have a printed and emailed copy to all council people and Assistant Mayor Stewie Fosson. I think you're the keeper of those files. So you'll get one too. But those are the changes. Thank you to everybody for the service you provide to these committees and boards. Keep in mind that we are not voting members of any of these boards. We are advisory liaison bridges of bringing information back and forth from this body to those bodies as needed. So Mayor, is there anything I wanted, you wanted to add to that? Non-voting, thank you for attending.
Yeah, there's the big ones, yep.
Anyway, we had chatted about that. So again, my thanks to council people for taking on those duties. And Mayor, the updates I have from the liaisons that I've been on are that the Energy and Environment Task Force met recently and is still grinding away on that Rocky Mountain Power application for the solar panels here, which we will approve, you know, well in advance of it going in, and has been welcoming some new members to their ranks as well. They had some turnover and some new applicants come on. Right, those are my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any liaison updates, but I did want to just clarify for Councilman Han. You had asked if it was the city and the county liquor sales. And I just want to make sure the county is separate from the city. I'm not sure what their hours of operation have been approved. But I do know that the city is different in some aspect than the county. So just, I wanted to mention that to you just in case that person was out of the county.
No, ma'am, it was a city or county. I didn't know who was in charge of the regulations besides the state. I figured it would be the city, seeing as how the business is within city limits. So, but it's a state statute changes. I didn't write it down, I'm sorry, but I did read it and it did change like, it was recently.
Yeah, it changed several years ago and that was, there was some confusion there. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dan Han.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to bring, I was going to ask some questions tonight, but I decided to come in and talk to Mayor White tonight. And my questions were on flood mitigation and the flood mitigation wall. After talking to Mayor White tonight, she told me that there'd be information coming soon, explaining the future of the mitigation and hopefully who, if any, will be affected, whatever the outcome. I hope that is gonna, I hope it's gonna happen soon. There's some people that are, that are very, very interested in the information. So anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cassidy.
Mayor, council staff, just two quick things for me. Planning Commission last week, was able to attend that on behalf of one of the folks in Ward Two. I would encourage everybody who was not able to attend to watch it. It was a lively debate. It was very worthwhile. It's long, so it takes a bit of an investment to watch the whole thing. But there's a lot of folks in there that are wrestling with some challenges and working very hard on our behalf. So I wanted to say thank you to those folks that were participating. And then my second point is to the police department. I was able to attend a training with them last week, I think it was. Very, very good. It was very good to see the professionalism and the esprit de corps within that department. So that's it for me.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Larson.
Yes, thank you. The senior board is really a fun one to sit on. Just a good bunch of people. They run a real good ship there. This last month, they had 1,352 meals that they served right there at the senior center. There was 2,337 that was home delivery. You know, so they do a lot. And it's not just taking meals to people. One of the things that, there were several comments made is that when the meals are delivered, the people that are delivering the meals, they go above and beyond. You know, it's not just knock on the door, leave it on the porch and run. You know, they take the time to go and visit the people. And there was one lady that was just all, you know, just was so pleased that somebody takes the time to stop and visit and even bring her a flower once in a while, you know, because her cat died and, you know, just different things like that that just shows some, some interest in the people, you know. So they're doing a good job there. They have a new van that they just got in service. And so that's, that's a plus for them. There is a private citizen that has donated a part of her estate to the senior center strictly because people were nice to her, you know. And that's the whole thing. One of the big deals is that their cinnamon roll prices have raised. They're a whole $4 now, you know, so don't hurt yourself.
Still a bargain.
Still a bargain, still a bargain. And the bus rides are also $4 apiece for those that are interested in utilizing their bus service. And that's available for anybody 18 years and older. Couple other things that I've got is just to announce that the airport is having a fly-in on September 13th. You look in the city webpage and Facebook page, there's lots of stuff going on that weekend. You know, it's going to be a fun weekend. There's soccer tournaments and softball tournaments. And the senior center is, not senior center, but the Museum of the American West has their Apple Fest. And then with the fly-in and they're planning, we're hoping to have some fun aircraft there for people to look at and see as well as it's amazing, a town the size of Lander, the amount of cars that are out there. And I mean, they've got some really cool stuff, you know. And so it's worth it to come out and just take a look. I noticed when I drove by the Propoja River Park, it looks like that's all been mowed. Did somebody hate that or did they just go down good? You know, that was worrying me for a fire hazard, but it's just nice to see that somebody got some use out of the fories that was there. And that's good. And I also enjoyed the taser training there last week. You know, it was sort of like watching fainting goats. It scares them, you know, when they fall over. But very, very interesting stuff, you know. And the thing that impressed me is that the equipment that has been purchased by the police department is that it's top of the line. You know, it's not some middle-of-the-road, low-end stuff, you know, that you can get at Walmart. These things can shoot up to 10 rounds and very, very effective. And I, the advertisement that we seen at the beginning of the training says that with the use of these that with the use of these, these weapons, that the use of, of guns or deadly force could be reduced by 50%, you know, just with these, with these tasers. And, you know, they're kind of expensive, but man, if you, if you saved one, you know, at one less shooting, that would be, be worth everything that you, you had there. And so like I say, I, I really enjoyed the, the training and Councilman Cassidy commented that, that he had attended that training also, but he did a lot more than attend the training. He talked to the, the police force there about dealing with distress and the mental stuff that goes along with, with being in a position like that. And he done just a fantastic job. And I, I really appreciated his, his time and effort while, while he was, while he was there. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. A few things on my end, continuing to learning more about Lander Police Department. I got to tag along for a couple of hours of the most recent DUI task force, which was really insightful. And I was just there for a couple of hours, but certainly the evening was once again really successful. And I'm sure interim chief can share more about that and his update for that. He and I have had continued conversations about mental health resources for the department. And likewise, he can provide more info on all the things he's looking at. Last week, Regina and I spoke with our new Public Affairs Director from Black Hills Energy, John Kaiser, who was in town both to say hello and also was here to donate or to provide a $2,500 donation to the, the Fire Department for PPE, which was great. Also, it was really nice that conversation, both Lance and Regina have been in contact with Mr. Kaiser about our, again, our franchise agreement. And they had a suggested change that would be beneficial to the city for that, which thank you. Cause we're, one of our goals is always looking for better revenue streams. So it's not big, but every bit counts. And it's also really nice that Mr. Kaiser, oh yeah, absolutely, that's what you would want to do. You should definitely go that route, which is a pleasant surprise to have an industry rep suggest of the two options, the one that was more beneficial to us and less beneficial to the company. So a lovely surprise. Lance, for your crew, thank you for all the skimcoat patches that are happening. Not to mention all the other work that's happening with sidewalks, Lincoln Street, getting McFarland done up by the hospital and so on. And I know we've got some things on the agenda for future, next year's projects that we're hoping for. So thanks for all you work, all the work you did to get this ball rolling. You know, these projects did not come up overnight. They were literally years in the making and I know you're already planning for the next many years of how we make things happen. So thanks for that. I also got to meet with Matt George, who's the new Activities Director for Fremont One. And while a big chunk of that was more in terms of my participation in the school, but also talked about the partnership between the city and Fremont One and the recreational facilities. And he's very interested in not only continuing, but strengthening that partnership, which is terrific. Had the chance to be at the open house that we just had, a little less participation this time. So it goes summers are busy, but it did provide a great opportunity for some lengthy conversations with some of the local staff from both of our, our senators, which was terrific to be able to have that. And one thing that I would imagine all of y'all are paying attention to, or at least have seen, and I would encourage us to continue keeping an eye on this, is the conversations happening in our neighboring town of Riverton about what it would take to have a recreation center, knowing that it's something that came up on the Community Master Plan. And what they're looking at in terms of the financing is pretty eye opening. So I think it'd be helpful for us to be keeping tabs on those conversations as they happen. Preached out to the Pioneer Parade organizers about our interest in increasing safety of the parade and opening the door for any conversations they'd want to have for that. We're of course welcome to do that. And then this Friday, a nice reminder that there's the, at the Lander Presents concert will be the Challenge for Charity Check Ceremony for, gosh, I think over 50 Lander nonprofits that are serving our community. That's pretty impressive. Rochelle and I are working to start to advertise the Police Chief position, which is terrific. We're psyched for that. And then in terms of our treasurer position, some info for all of y'all is we did have a number of applicants for the position. Unfortunately, there are only a fairly few that met the required qualifications for that. And we had a number of challenges in, in actually filling the position, given it's somewhat unstable position as being an appointed position, since it's appointed by the mayor. And then also the, the qualified applicants were looking for high salaries, given the cost of housing in Lander. And so before we could finish filling that position, our current treasurer, Shari Lara, decided that she would stay through this mayoral term, for which I am deeply grateful for. So glad to have your continued expertise for that. And so I think it highlights some of the challenges we have in trying to keep and attract the, the highly skilled and experienced staff that we want to have here and the challenges in, in the replacement and succession with the cost of housing and the nature of the appointed position. So food, fruit for us to think on as we continue trying to provide guidance to the city. So sorry, a very long update for me, but with that, I'll turn it over to the, the staff and interim chief law.
Well, I don't even know where to begin, but I can tell you, even after bullying, Councilman Larson would not take a ride on the new taser, no matter what we tried to do. From the Police Department, just, I would like to thank Councilman Cassidy and Councilman Larson. As much as it's a benefit for them to come into our trainings to see what we're doing, it's a benefit for my people to see you guys, to hear about you, to hear about the policy and budgetary decisions that you make for them, but they, they don't ever see you. So it means a lot to them as well. Thanks to all of you. We do have top of the line of equipment and that's all thanks to all of you, you allowing us to purchase the best equipment for our staff. I don't have a whole lot of new stuff, some of the mental health follow-up we have. And I've had crickets from Cortico, which is the app that I talked to you about the last time. But I've done a little research, Omaha Police Department, Lincoln Police Department, with partnership with the University of Nebraska and a grant, they've done some mental health studies for law enforcement and first responders. And Lincoln and Omaha require a mental health checkup once a year for their staff. That's something that I'm visiting with Rochelle about of, of how we put that in place here. We're looking proper verbiage to where it's not directly related to potentially being in trouble at your job. It's an, it's an outreach program where once a year, they can just kind of check the box that they're mentally okay. And I've spoke with the staff at the University of Nebraska and trying to find that proper counselor of who that person would be, non-related to Lander, not related to Fremont County, something where they feel safe. The initial research right now shows over a 50% reduction in the stigma of reaching out and asking for them. The idea is a, a check the box. And if there's some things identified, how, how they move forward and get help with those, that's not a direct relation to their job or will affect their jobs. So that's something that we're working on right now, would be my follow-up for the mental health side of things. It was pretty fun to have the mayor ride along. I think it was a little bit over stimulating for her to see the amount of cars and lights and things. And as you whip around and race around, but I'll tell you, this DUI team that we have, that you guys are well aware of, is still extremely effective. I think the night the mayor rode along, we had about 120 stops between six officers, over 15 arrests. The risk, the reduction of calls for service in Riverton was over 47% that night. And I think the biggest thing is over the next couple of days, it continues to drop the calls for service in Riverton for its residual for up to two to three days of less than 20%. This team has taken a focus from the entire state. I'm actually headed down next week to present in front of the Governor's Council and NHTSA about how we run this program and the effect that it's have in our county. If you're not aware, before this started, Fremont County was one of the most dangerous counties in the entire United States for impaired driving fatalities. And in the last two years, with this DUI team being in effect, we are not even halfway up the list in Wyoming now, let alone the United States. So this has been very effective team that NHTSA is grabbing a hold of. And it's becoming a viral thing where they're pushing this same type of behavior across law enforcement. So again, it's effective and I'm appreciative of the mayor and the council for everything that you trust us to continue to move forward to make us a better place and safer. That's all I have unless anybody asks questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Lance.
Yes, just a few project updates. So Lincoln Street was tentatively going to be paved tomorrow. Now it's moved to Thursday. And so this section out in front from second to third and then Third Street. So seeing some of this work being buttoned up, it was put off because subgrade wasn't accepted. And so it needs to be graded a little better and our expectations of pavement, hopefully the, we've got the challenges of having curb and gutter that we're following, but we're trying to keep consistent, good slope on those streets as they go through. So contractors are paying attention to quality and really appreciate that. That street or that project is going to not probably meet being paved by the end of this year. And so there's going to be some requests coming from the contractor and we'll talk about that when they show up as far as what actions the council wants to pursue with extending the contract or liquidated damages, liquidated damages or whatever that may look like. So gonna bring a schedule and a timeline to discuss in detail with you guys, once that request comes through. And then McFarland Drive, it's paved, but they're pouring concrete around the valve boxes, getting it ready to open. It turned out pretty well. I mean, we left some existing curb and gutter, you know, we're not redoing everything because we can't afford to do all of the infrastructure on every project and still have other projects to do. It rides well, meets expectations. It's a much improved road, but a lot of those improvements up there have to do with sanitary sewer upgrades and a new line. And then we had, we weren't meeting fire flows in a commercial area. We weren't looped in the system. So a lot of that work happened underground that you didn't see around McFarland Drive, that enables that commercial area to be much improved. We have two buildings up there, one that's still on a septic and one that's chosen to be dry, that aren't currently served, but I think we have plans to serve those if they're interested. So it finishes the loop. I mean, I don't know if you guys knew, like Dollar General wasn't able to get water. And, you know, we had the express loop across from them, or I think that's the name of it, that is still hauling water. They can hook to a water line now, but you know, they were hauling water and that's off of our main streets within Landers. So these improved infrastructure projects provide those necessary loops and improve water quality and improve service. Where we probably should have had developers to do that from the beginning, but it didn't happen that way. So sidewalks, we're waiting on some truncated domes. And so we're going to see some of the ADA ramps not complete when school starts, but a lot of the sidewalks will be in and they're waiting for parts to do those final pours. So we're, we'll have those conversations with the school district on what that means. Make sure that there is a safe ability to get to and from school and that we have those filled in with road base and we control that. But the alley access should be open off of Fifth Street. And, you know, we're not anticipating major problems with people getting to and from school, but we'll have those conversations on where we think schedule is and get that completed as soon as we can. And contractors pushing to get back to Casper as soon as they can, but they're working Saturdays and pushing time to, to make that project happen. It's looking nice. Bishop Randall, it's finished. We did the final walkthrough, substantial completion's going to be issued and advertising's going to happen shortly. That project looks like it's coming in on, on budget. So that's a good thing for us, but we'll be talking closeout and advertisement with you next. And then Osprey nests. So if you guys are getting calls about that, we are handling that. We're not touching the pole with the Osprey on it at this point, with our LED light replacement project at the Legion Field. And so we'll have to wait. We have some calls into, you know, we started with the game of fish, then they sent us to Cheyenne and talking all the way to Littleton, Colorado about permits and, you know, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And so there's a lot of red tape associated with disturbing nests and we're not disturbing the nests. We're allowing the fledglings to fly and do what they need to do, and then we'll come back and do our work. Part of what we're talking about is resetting a pole that may be, and moving the nest next year. And so we have a landowner who's interested in having a pole. So we're going to go through that process and work with Rocky Mountain Power and others to see if we can get those birds not to be on the light pole, but take to a different spot. So have some goals there. Little League Field, we're into a fencing project, which turned into, you know, tearing out dugouts, getting everything up to ADA wider, pulling those fence backs. That's all being done internally by Parks and Rec and some of our maintenance shop and then some of the public works employees. So we'll get that field up to Little League standards. It's short now and it'll meet distances by the time by just moving some of the things back and it'll tie in nice to the bleachers. So goal is to have fence up so that we don't have free skating, you know, by the time winter hits. So Kevin's pushing that project, but happy to answer any other questions that you guys have about projects or anything going on.
Thank you, Lance. Questions for Lance? No, all right. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody who came to the open house. Like was mentioned, we had about half of the people we've had at the last two as far as numbers. But where else can you reach out to 40 citizens and give them the opportunity for a one-on-one conversation? So we plan on doing that again in the spring. The format may look a little different, but we are planning on continuing that open house. So thank you to all who came. The only other thing I have is a, back in January, February, Rochelle and I came to you guys and asked if we could hire two part-time clerk scanners instead of one. We had planned on, part-time is 19 hours or less. So we had planned in the six months to have about 900 hours of scanning time. Those two people that we've hired are great. They've made great progress, but the six months is over. And so we want to see if we can extend that. We figured 900 hours-ish and right now in the six months they've been with us, they are at 183 hours as of the last pay period. But that 183 hours bought us great, great strides. The ordinances and the resolutions are completely digitized from 1890 to present. And so now we're compatible or we're compliant with the Wyoming State Archives regulations. And the minutes are back to 1978, so got a little ways to go there. Subdivision permanent records are being worked on and digitized in accordance with the State Archives requirements. And the building department, not plan, plans have been scanned, but the building department permits were scanned a couple of years ago, but not separated and put out in a useful manner. And we're starting now also. So if, if the council is willing, we'd like to retain those two for another six months to see if we can finish our task at hand.
So Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question of clarification, the, there's still a lack of, or there's a discrepancy in the amount of hours they've worked to the amount of hours we've approved. What is the reason for that?
Well, one of the reasons we asked to have hired two instead of one back in January was because of their limited availability. So we have one that has very limited availability due to some health issues and the other one is coming in pretty regularly.
And so if we approve an extension to that, what will be the allotted number of hours and will we get closer to that?
You never gave us a limited hours, but the, the job descriptions, if I'm not mistaken, were written for six months part-time. Is that correct, Rochelle?
Yes, not to exceed 19 hours a week, more or less. So allowing for the possibility that someone might be there 40 hours, week one, and not show up for another week and a half, because that sometimes happens when you're, have part-time individuals that have other things going on. And the health issue wasn't something that happened until after she had accepted the position.
So do we have an average number of hours that they're spending?
I know in the last six months, they've spent total 183 hours as of June 18th, our last pay period.
Okay.
Right. But we had funding allocated for as much as 900 hours through this.
Yeah, and that was fiscal year, because now we're in a new fiscal year.
Right, of course.
So we allocated enough for 900, approximately 900 hours. They've worked 180 of that. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Regina, I think you're asking if we, if we can give you kind of a thumbs up.
I'm asking for a head nod, just like we did last. I'm asking for a head nod, just like we did last time. Again, it's, it's the job descriptions were originally for six months and if we can extend those, that would be welcome.
Okay. Council?
May I have a question? Will they, will they fulfill the requirements in six months' time?
We'll, we'll never be done digitizing all our data if that's what you're asking.
So if that's the case, then what's the aim?
None of the current staff was having any luck in getting that requirement fulfilled.
So the, so the, the goal line is 900 hours? The goal line is fulfilling the requirement?
Why is the goal line was 900 hours and we were going to get as far as we could get?
Okay. So we burn through 900 hours, we get as far as we get, that'll be completed in six months?
And then you'll probably hear from us again.
So when it, when, so are we, so what, when does this complete then is my question? When is this done? Because the target doesn't seem clear now. Is the target completing the task? Is it completing the 900 hours? Is it completing the six months?
I think that could be at your direction. You know, what I came to ask for was a head nod for retaining these because we had a lot in 900 hours and they spent 200 of that. But I guess you guys are policy and so if you think that we need to have a, a budget restraint or an hourly restraint or a end goal for digitizing, that would be up to you and we would go do what you ask.
And the task was assigned by whom? By the state?
Oh, the requirements for, for, yeah, for permanent files is monitored, what's required? What's the right word I'm looking for, Rochelle? The Wyoming Department of Archives has requirements that we're supposed to follow for permanent files.
So that's the goal line then?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not hours or months? So it's going to be longer than six months?
That's the potential. Yeah, we've, we've got a lot of really old files.
So are we restricted in any way to only approving for six months at a time? Or are we?
That was the original ask that council approved. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like it'd be, be worthwhile saying, potentially change it to, to achieve the 900 hour and see where we're at at that point, where we're at and to what extent we've been in compliance with the state requirements and what, what is still left to be done. So Councilmember Hahn?
Is that contract labor?
But I think it's with contract part-time, is that Rochelle can answer that?
It, it was advertised and I can't remember how many interviews there were, probably five, and then two people, you gave us the authorization to offer it to two people. And so it was advertised maybe January or February. I could go back and look, but that's how it came to be. It was in the newspaper, on our website, on the Wyoming Workforce Services. It was open for, I, I could go back and look, Councilmember Hahn, but I can't remember six months ago how long it was open for. I apologize.
And, and that, that threshold, especially split between two people, is well below the limit at which someone would be, would be considered a, an employee of the city of Lander and have to be afforded benefits, et cetera.
That's without benefits then?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I meant by contract.
And that's the reason for the 19 hour more or less, because that's related to benefits. Then I could look really quickly to give you more details.
Councilmember Stubble?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm in favor, I think instead of having it six months now and six months later, because it's a ongoing task that here sounds like we won't be able to finish, we've approved 900 hours in the budget, let's run that out and then consider how much more, like where are we in prioritization of which, what needs to get digitized, what have we achieved and then reconsider on a budgetary level. It sounds like it's really good work that's happening and sort of endless task, but at some point we need to say, that's important, that's in compliance and now this doesn't need to be digitized perhaps.
I think that was my, my, the line of my questioning was like, was the six months artificial? And if we have to achieve the task, if we're directed to achieve the task, then let's apply the resources fully to achieve that task. So I'm in support of that for sure.
Okay. See nods for that. Lance?
And just to provide a little clarity to that, I think that the reason that it's six months is that we have to manage not to exceed our requirements as a part-time employee. So just telling them to go, you know, get the hours, we still have to manage that under the current job prescription.
There's, there's two things that play there. Six months can be a seasonal employee at 40 hours a week. Seasonal employees are not always entitled to benefits as well. Or you can have part-time employees that are no more than 19 hours a week, again, that may not claim benefits. So two. Well, I like the no more than 19 hours a week more or less when you talk to like Wyoming State Retirement, for example, and you ask them a question, sometimes it's not crystal clear, but they, that's what they will tell you, like as long as your part-time employees are under 19 hours more or less, they allow for the grace of someone that may have more time to devote to something or what they really allow for is someone goes on vacation and you have a part-time employee. And we have this in our municipal court, we have a part-time person that works 19 hours a week, except when our main clerk is on vacation and then she may fill in 40 hours, but then you may not see her again for three or four weeks. So it's that 19-hour a week threshold. Again, I would like to see that go no longer than six more months.
One additional piece of background, when we came to you guys six months ago, that 900 hours, we asked for about another $6,000 to $7,000 in that last year's budget. So we've already spent $2,500 of that. So if we keep the budget cap, that will relate to the hours cap and we can make that work real easy.
Great. Sounds like we, we've got agreement on that.
So roughly 700 hours remaining.
Correct. Yep.
And did you say, how much money do you say, Regine? Because the 6,700?
Right, I was.
Yeah. 6,600 to 7,000 is what we asked for six months ago.
Yep.
And we spent 2,500 of that.
Mayor, one more question?
Yes.
For Regine, but off this topic. Regine, were you able to talk to Lance at all about the culvert yet on Cemetery Ditch?
Only by phone messages. We'll get back to you on that.
Thanks.
There is a Cemetery Ditch meeting tomorrow where it will, it will be discussed.
Thank you.
I have nothing tonight.
And Rochelle?
I would just like to let council know if they don't already know or haven't noticed, there will be a, a voting session on the 26th before the work session. I think there are four agenda items right now. There will be a public hearing for the new liquor license for the restaurant on the onsite laundry that's been proposed. It's being advertised in the newspaper now. There will be potentially a LEADA MOU update, an art donation agreement, and oh, the Board of Adjustment Planning Committee vacancy appointment. That's what I've been told to put on the agenda so far.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may? Yes. We sped a little bit past Treasurer Laura, but I wanted to go back if I could and just offer my gratitude for you sticking around for the rest of this term. Treasurer Laura, you've, your expertise is tremendous. You've steered us in some pretty incredible directions with the types of financing that you've helped bring us in and the types of projects we can undertake. And it was a really tricky and challenging situation from what I've understood from the mayor for the hire. And so those are structural problems we will face with further department head hires and I hope we figure out ways to set ourselves up better to attract that kind of talent. But I, I'm grateful that you've, that you're sticking around with us. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We'll go, we'll go with Councilmember Cassidy since he, he's going to catch up. Great. So moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any, any comments, questions? Okay. Call for the question, Councilmember Josh Hahn?
Yes.
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 Great. Motion passes. Unfinished business, approved second reading of ordinance 2025-5, rezoning a parcel on Smith Creek Road being a 12.14 acre tract of land in the northeast, one quarter of section 20, township 33 north, range 99 west, from R5 multifamily residential district to an agricultural district. I get a motion in a second and then we can have discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. And Regine, this is, if you could give us a bit of an update because some council members weren't here for our first readings, that'd be helpful.
Okay. This rezoning request was duly processed through the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended this for approval. As you guys know, it takes three readings to make a zoning ordinance change by state statute. The council that was present at the last meeting approved it on first reading with the comments that they would like further discussion on changing it from R5 housing opportunity level to an agricultural level. I was asked for no information, so none was given and I have not had any further public comment on the matter.
Thank you. With that, opening it to council comments, questions about it. Councilmember Cox?
Yes, thank you. So at our first meeting, when we approved on first reading, there were a couple of questions that did come up. And one of them was that this had been through the Planning Commission and had been approved by the Planning Commission. And then there was a little bit of a comment made and I, I can't remember, but it was something on the lines of the Planning Commission had just kind of put it through because they were a little bit irritated that the zoning wasn't passed. That was not, I've asked a couple of folks if that interpretation is true or that perception is true. And, and I'm happy to report that that was not necessarily an accurate description of how they felt, although it does align, their decision and their approval of this does align with all of those things that were included in the zoning request, meaning what the priorities were, what areas were priorities, et cetera. The other thing that came up with this is, in speaking with the landowner, in order to provide any kind of housing on this property, and I, this is kind of a, a question and maybe a statement, that it would have to be rezoned agriculture anyway, because in order to sell or to parcel that land, it has to be an acre plus due to the water and septic systems, my understanding. I needed that clarified if that is in fact the case. So if, if they were to subdivide, it would have to be agriculture anyway because of the requirement of the lot size. Does anybody know if that's true, accurate, correct?
Lance has lit up the microphone.
Sure. I guess there are, there is a plan to be able to provide water and sewer service to this area, but it's expensive. And so if a developer were to develop it as R5, the sewer would come from Blue Ridge and the water would come from a similar location and have to be extended to serve this parcel. So the developer costs are more to have higher densities, whereas septics have their own hurdles because they are something that we have to approve or get asked to approve when they're within city limit boundaries, but the county regulates those permits. So they're banking on the idea that they'll be able to divvy these up into one acre parcels and meet those requirements for septic in order to develop it that way. And there's less requirements in the ag subdivision than there are in the R5 subdivision. So significantly different costs, significantly different densities, but both developable options if willing to be invested in.
Right. And so I, I don't want to speak for the property owner, but I think cost prohibitive in relation to infrastructure and utility to that property currently. So, okay, thank you.
If that, that's it, the, the proposed, I think it's 12 lots for it. And Lance, my understanding is the county is no longer issuing septic permits within city boundaries. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate. If we're within 300 feet of providing our services, then there's a requirement to hook up. And so it's a requirement where they have to come to us and then ask at that point. So does the city allow this to be a septic within city limits? We've always had the goal to provide services equally to our customers. So a lot of the projects we're working on are to provide base infrastructure and get within those distances. But there are instances where people are either on septic and they're one acre lots or their options are limited and the infrastructure gets expensive, but we have issued those when it makes sense and said, yes, we will allow a permit here and then put it on our map for future growth and expansion. If we can get within 300 feet, then we can get back to treating that in the sewer lagoons rather than treating it through septic, which we think we're more efficient treating it through our lagoon system.
Okay. Thank you. Regine?
And, oh, sorry, I just wanted to clarify too, in our, when we reviewed our Title IV, right? I'm saying that right? Our zoning, one of the issues was this was a low priority for development. Is that also correct? I think it was three, anyway, it was the lowest priority that, of options for development, if I'm not mistaken.
So I think what you're referring to is the master plan. The master plan had priority areas one, two, and three.
That's right.
The first few hundred yards of this towards the west are priority two, the rest is priority three. What that means in master plan terms is that, just like Lance said, if you're going to do it, the cost to put in infrastructure and develop it according to our subdivision rules is very costly.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I just want to remind you that some of the language that we're talking about tonight is mixed up with a previous subdivision application that was, that was withdrawn by the owner. Tonight, there's no request to put in water and sewer in this. It's simply to take a R5 parcel of land and rezone it to agricultural in its entirety.
Thank you.
Mayor White? If I may? Councilmember Stubble? I think as we're debating around the question of whether it's cost prohibitive, if that's a black and white, that's factual, or if it's costly to add the city of water and sewer out to this parcel for an R5 development, you know, I think that's a point where we have different sources of information among different council people. And so what I wanted to ask though, Assistant Mayor, we're saying it's costly, we're saying some folks maybe believe it's cost prohibitive. If we had a developer with proposal that aligned with our priorities to have a higher density housing someplace in Lander, right, to provide greater housing, you know, affordability and attainability for our residents, there is a space for us to have discretion on incentives for that type of a proposal. So do we have that discretion to say, we can wheel and deal a little bit about the cost of water and sewer expansion because we want to see this, you know, 50, 50 unit apartment or something that aligns with our values? Is that, it within our realm?
Now the subdivision, thank you. The subdivision regulations read that when you subdivide, you have to put in all of the city infrastructure at the developer's cost. The intent then is for the developer to recoup that cost in their, in their sales. We as a planning board do not determine the, you know, the, the private or the contractual or the profit aspects of that, right? We just say, you're subdividing, you have to provide streets to our specs, water to our specs, sewer to our specs, streetlights to our specs, all those kinds of things, right? Everything right now, as you see out front here, is more costly. There are developers that know how to use tax income credits and other opportunity programs to reduce their capital construction cost. The city currently doesn't have any of those available to them, to us, the way our code is written. So we can't incentivize a developer, hey, we'll do this if you do that. We, we did for Blue Ridge Apartments, but again, we were in a grant incentivized program, opportunity program.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dan Hahn and Councilmember Cassidy?
Yes. I was gonna, I was gonna say that, that I was at the last planning board meeting and there was a person that is very concerned about turning residential zones into something besides residential. You know, the city has been crying for years. We need more houses. And it's, it's not just this piece of property, but it's starting to come up, you know, it's, and it, and this is a, this is a big concern. And for me, my concern is what is our direction? We say, we, we say we want to bring people in and densify, but then we take and we turn property from residential to something else. I mean, and like I said, the, the person was, was very concerned. And so to tell you the truth, it, it's confusing for me. And so to tell you the truth, it's confusing for me because I hear, I hear one thing and then we're doing the opposite.
Well, and I think that's why it's, what is some that takes three readings for it and, and that concern was also voiced in the, in our first meeting that to change this would mean this is one of the few areas remaining of R5 where substantive amount of housing could be made and is that in alliance, alignment with our council goals that we have for being able to keep cost of living in terms of housing a little bit lower in Lander and provide more housing opportunities. So that's, maybe that's putting too fine a point on it, but I would say that's very much a part of the decision that's before us on, on this vote.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Similarly, when we look at that master plan and those priority zones that Regina mentioned, the priority one, two, and three, and if, if as Regina very clearly articulated that there's an immense cost to the landowner to develop that, that's across all of those priorities and that's baked into our master plan. And if that is the case, and if that is the case across all of those occasions, I'm very concerned about removing the limited space we currently have in, in an R5 zone because we'll never get it back. And if that applies to everywhere across that master plan, then that's just the reality that we have to deal with. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson.
Yes. I don't know how many of you have been out and actually looked at that, that piece of property, but that would be a nightmare, you know, to do a high density type, type housing out there. You know, it is just a lot of swamp and different things like that. I just, I mean, it's not like they're trying to, to turn it into an industrial park or anything like that. It's, it's, it's going to be housing. And I, I think that we take for what we can get there, you know, and I, I just think that it's a lot better suited for these one acre plots than it is to try and get multiple apartment units in up there.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
I believe this was first brought to us as a tree nursery or something, wasn't it? It wasn't originally brought in as housing. When they, when they, so nursery and housing? And so, so what is the housing? A single housing unit? Or what would the housing be there? Is this, you know what I mean? Like if you put one house on it and then have a giant tree nursery, what, what are we gaining when you can, if you can, which you have to spend money to make money, as we all know? If somebody were to buy that and subdivide it, hook into city water and sewer, and not only is it a little revenue coming back to the city, but you got housing for people, you know, which we've had meeting after meeting after meeting of, whoa, we have no place to build houses unless, I mean, it came to the point where we were wanting to build apartments all over town internally, and we're not willing to, you know, try and get somebody to pick that up and turn it into something where, you know, we could have possibly 12 different houses or, you know, an apartment complex or something like that. Is it hooked into city water and sewer then?
That would be in, in changing it to agricultural.
See, so you're gaining nothing revenue wise, maybe taxes a little. Where you could be plumbing in, the water line goes right down the road. It's right there, the water and sewer is. Yes. So what would they, okay, so this would be for Lance. What would you have to do for two inch? What would you have to do to supply adequate water and sewer to something like that?
That's going to be an eight inch.
Eight inch all the way?
Yeah, with a fire hydrant.
And where's the?
To meet fire flows.
How much of that is two inch?
And so right now, there's no two inch, the, I think there might be six or eight inch that's coming down Smith Creek to about where the apartments end. So it's Smith Creek Road, and that's where things stop.
That's where it all deadheads.
And we had a, when the developer was moving on this project and we realized that there were a public right of way portion that wasn't developed, we were partnering in that to pave and help extend some services. So we were bringing, you know, a small partnership to do our part within the right of way and say, from the developer's portion on, you know, being able to connect would be theirs. Julia asked about, you know, partnering and extending, and it's tricky because you're spending our enterprise monies, you know, and then are you going to get them back? Like, is this a special improvement district or where does the capital come from, especially when you're looking for a significant amount of additional money from that enterprise account to do the projects you already have in front of you? So it's one of those things where we designed the transmission lines and extensions in these areas and said, hey, we could take these to water development if we ever had a developer and try to get a 50% grant on a transmission line in these growth areas. But right now, we haven't done that. That commits us to finding the other 50%. And then that's also a multi-year process. Is a developer going to wait that long or are they ready to jump now? So we don't have a lot of options to, to find the capital unless we are talking about, you know, our rates discussion again and where those revenues come from and then how the council would like to incentivize. But that's really what you're talking about. How much do we pick up in, in these growth areas? Some of what we could talk about is relaxing street requirements at some point in time, if you guys would like to talk about that at a work session. And that's an idea we've talked about of more asphalt, less curb and gutter, use surface drainage, use ditches. You know, the appealing part of an ag subdivision is the roads are less wide. We aren't, you know, every time we pave a road within town right now, we're technically paving too because of all the parking area that we've established outside of that. And so do we want to talk about pathways under asphalt utilities outside of that in a more developable, developer friendly model that we want to put into our standards and specifications and change in code? But we've had our hurdles with changing code to look at those. So those are things you guys could consider on some of the things you are in control of, but as far as the city's role, we just prepare to allow people to have private property rights and then whatever is going to happen, we have to be ready for it. But we're not really driving density or we're not driving these decisions. These are bought and sold by individual people for their decisions of what to do. You're not partnered with a developer right now, but I understand not changing, changing zoning, but the question on what we're doing, we're just have to be ready to be able to do whatever somebody's business or decision takes them into and be able to respond to it.
Sure. Just by looking at everything and hearing what you're saying, it seems like it was already anticipated to turn into a possible housing unit or something like that in the future. You know, because the water line stops right there, you know, and it can potentially be expanded on. Yeah, I just, I'm having a hard time with it.
Our goal is to bring those water lines and sewer lines to a location where they can be extended.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think it's there. Like they're there, it's expensive, but they can be extended from where the infrastructure exists.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. Just, I didn't hear if you answered the question that Councilman Han had, because the, the landowner had come and asked for this to be agriculture for a nursery, a tree nursery, and not for subdividing into 12. Has that changed? That has not changed. He is still asking for a nursery.
Correct. The property owners in, in the audience and confirmed that it's, that they desire to switch to agricultural so it can be potentially purchased by someone to turn it into a tree nursery.
That's right. And so I think just my initial line of questioning had to do with just understanding there are two ways to develop that property. And, and so it's been covered, but thank you. I just didn't hear, there's a couple of times that Councilman Larson, I couldn't just hear, and then Mayor White, if you turn away from your microphone, we're unable to hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Good feedback.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other, other comments, questions from council? Okay.
Mayor, I'll add, yes, I'll add just because I had a question, but not my perspective on this, that I am, I'm loathe to rezone from R5 right now as well. You know, I, I think I see a clear need for us to expand the housing options, types of housing that we have in Lander, and I hope we take another bite at where we can find some compromise within our zoning code changes that might be necessary, but you know, we, we haven't gotten there yet. And so I don't see us making more R5. I, it's hard for me to picture a proposal coming to us for switching something right now that's low density to higher. And so I'm strongly attached to keeping open some R5 possibilities here. And Mr. Leaf Green, I, this is one of those nights where we're reminded that we do have real impacts in our decisions on people's lives. Sometimes we get lost in the bureaucratic, you know, debates or the high level policy. And, and so this is a difficult one, and I know you have a plan here, but I, I can't support this change from R5 to ag right now. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other comments? Okay. Call for the question then, Councilmember Larson. On the second reading, correct?
No. No.
Yes.
No.
No.
So the motion fails four to two. So Mr. Leaf Green has reiterated what Councilmember Stubble said. Yes, obviously has consequences on you, and thank you for bearing with us in this process. Yeah, I know it's a disappointment. Yeah, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have the first reading of Ordinance 2025-6, replacing ordinances 842, 854, and 10, 1015, and establishing comprehensive regulations for the public and private community forest in Lander. This is obviously part of our public meeting earlier. We get a motion in a second and then we can have a discussion.
Mayor, move approval of Ordinance 2025-6.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilmember Stubble.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cassidy. Thank you. All right. Comments, questions about this one? This is our, reestablishing our tree board. Councilmember Dan Han.
I want to, I want to start by saying the tree, the tree board has done a great job managing the city's trees over the years and, and their people are great. I, I, I consider them friends. I, I worked on it way back when, and this is not about you guys at all. I have, and a lot of people that I've talked to have a little bit of a problem establishing a board that, that basically can. And I don't think the guys here would, but I, if, if we establish this board, I don't know who's going to be coming on down the road establishing a board that, that can rule over private property rights and city limits. And I know what everybody's going to say, everybody's going to say, well, you know, it's an advisory board. The problem here is, is as a city council, we rely on, on advisory boards. And like I said, I think the guys that are in front of me are totally stand up. I'm not sure what would happen down the road. But my problem is, is most boards in town are advisory, but the council usually votes with the board's findings. So for me, it's, it's, it's just big, for me, it's big government. It's just another, and like I said, these guys are, are stand up in the crowd, and I, I don't think they would do it, but if we establish this board, this is a, this is a self-elected board and you don't know who's going to get on there. But I think that, that what we have now, the way we have it now, where the tree board takes care of the city trees and the, the administration and the city council, we're elected people. We're not a, a self-elected board. So I personally think that, that keeping it the way it is, is just, is a lot safer. And like I said, the people in the crowd, I mean, I, I have nothing but great things to say, but having a board make decisions over private property in town, I, I think it's just a bad, I think it's a bad road to go down, you know? But anyway, that, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for that. And so Councilmember Cox, I want to make sure you can hear me when I am facing this way. Can, okay, good. I'm closer to the microphone. I had a good conversation with Kevin Green, our Parks and Rec Director, as well as Don here in town, Don Reynolds, about this, excuse me, here in the, the meeting about what this would look like, because that was one of the confusions throughout the last conversation. So the tree board would continue as what had happened in the past in providing guidance for the trees on city property. So nothing unusual there. They could, would also make recommendations to Kevin to then seek out a certified arborist to determine if trees that are on private property that pose public safety for things like sight of line on tree intersections or encroachment onto public property are in fact hazardous, and that would be done not by the tree board but by a certified arborist. Because we don't have one on city staff, we would have to turn to local arborists for that. In terms of truly private property, so if you and I are neighbors and my tree is potentially hanging over your garage, that's a civil suit where they, they can note that as, yes, that seems to be a hazardous situation, but that's, that's a civil, civil issue. That's not between, it's not the city's involvement. It would be between you and I as private property owners. Does that help eschew some of your concerns?
No, it really, it, it, it really doesn't. We, we've, we've, we've lived, I've been in this town for 50 years and we've not, we've, we've not needed this. And the, the one thing that bothers me is, and our attorney's not here, but he, it, it came right out of his mouth. I asked him if, if, if trimming trees, and I don't know how many people in the, the crowd have had their trees, I mean, we've spent a lot of money. We've probably spent $10,000 in the last 40 years having our trees. And I know, I mean, I, when it comes to arborist stuff, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty savvy on that because in our town, you're very limited. Arborists are very limited on what they can do. I mean, there's a lot of rules and regulations, what arborists can do in this town, because I was, I mean, we had 75 foot trees, you know, and the limbs up there, 75 feet, and they break off once in a while and come down. I wanted to have 20 feet cut out. They, they wouldn't do it because the city won't allow it. The, and I totally understand all that, but my concern is if, if there's a determination that comes to City Hall, the City Hall is going to get an arborist, an arborist is going to go out, and if the person can't afford it, then, and we have, we, I don't know of any problems in the last 50 years and been on the council for 18 and a half years. I don't know. I mean, different places have, have had problems, but, but I don't know of anything, you know, maybe a car, you know, in the last 50 years got smashed or something by a branch, but I, you know, we haven't had those kinds of problems, but if we go out and we do this and these people can't afford it, the, the attorney said, what, what they're going to do is they're going to come in, they're going to lean their property. You know, I, I think we're going down a wrong trail. It sounds, it sounds wonderful, the way you say it, but the potential is, can be disastrous. We're having, what we're having in the next couple of weeks, we're having an arborist come down and, and cut a, a, gosh, there might be 20 or 30 little branches of dead wood, and it's $1,200. When you talk about big trees, you can rack up $10,000, $15,000 in somebody's trees. So if we go out and we start, and I, I know, I've lived here, going, if, if we go down this trail and we start cutting people's trees, whether they like it or not, we're going to be leaning property like crazy. And I mean, I'm not for it. And like I said, I don't have anything, these guys are great, but this, this could have the potential to be disastrous for people.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Cassidy.
Mayor, just a couple of questions that might be for the staff. Who drafted the ordinance?
It was Tree Board that put together the combination of the three ordinances. So the original ordinances were drafted. the original ordinances were drafted, I guess, in replacement. And so that's where this attempt was to clean up ordinances that already exist, not create new ones. And so I think that some of what we're looking into or talking about is, you know, that combination of those three different, and then trying to not necessarily redefine anything, but put it into one simple document rather than three. So are, are there elements, though, of this ordinance that are additive to those original three? Is there anybody in the room that can speak to that? Because there are.
Yeah. Councilmember Stubble. Yep. Thank you, Mayor White, and Councilman Han, because I want to address some of what you brought up as well. Councilman Cassidy, the, the primary concern here about authority for the city to address a private hazardous tree is already on our city code. So Councilman Han, that's, that's not new that we're adding with this ordinance. That's in ordinance 10 15. It's code 1199. And the language is substantively, you know, identical here. I think we cleaned up some like wordsmithing. But right now, in our code today, dead disease and hazard trees on private property, the city shall advise a private landowner as to the proper way to remove that tree. The city shall have the cause, the right to cause to be removed, that tree, any tree that's diseased or is declared a hazard. They'll, will declare in writing to the property owner that needs to take, to do so. The property owner can appeal that decision. The city, I'm just going through, you know, pretty quickly here, but it's what you see in this ordinance now. The city governing body, us, will review the order, and it remains in full force if we decide for it to be so. If the property owner fails to comply, then yes, we will cause such live or dead tree, shrub, bower hedge to be removed or destroyed, and shall assess that expense against the property owner. So Councilman Han, I, I hear your, your serious concerns with that authority. We're not adding that. If that's something that we don't want to have on our books, then we can't pass this ordinance, but we also then have to repeal existing code, because that would still be in effect if we don't pass this ordinance.
The only thing new here is adding the board in the mix, right? The, as, 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 the language that we have written down does not include, because the, the, this is, this is a new tree, we used to have the, 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 what the Lander tree, the Lander tree board. What we've done here is we, we have taken and we started a new board, we're starting fresh. And when, when I was on the tree board, which is all the way up till now, the, the tree board had nothing to do with city. I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about laws that we have on the books. What I'm talking about is we're, we're taking and we're, we're assigning, this, this language right here is assigning a board, a newly formed board, to jump in the mix. I'm not, I'm not complaining about what we have. What I'm saying is, is what we have and what we've had for 50 years that I've been here has worked. And I don't think it's necessary to get a board involved. We have the people in place. We have the laws in place. We don't need a board in place. We don't, we don't need that. We've lived without it. That's just what I'm saying. If we add that, I see a potential of problems. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm not trying to take what we have away. What I'm saying is, is, even though these guys are great, I don't know what's back behind them. I don't know what, I don't know where things are going to go. And I personally do not want, and people that I've talked to do not want a board that's out there that is going to come to the council. I mean, you know, I hate to bring it up, but you know, the lift was a board, and they were an advisory board. They came to us. And they, they made a lot of people mad. We got, you know, we got dealt a lot of stuff. And so sometimes boards, I don't think it's necessary to have a board for everything. I think that elected officials and city administration can handle these things. I really, I don't think we need this. And the people I'm talking to, they're scared to death. And it has nothing to do with the rules and regulations. It's just throwing a new board in the mix. And, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just not for it. Like I said, these guys are great.
Mayor, if I may reply. Yes, thank you. Councilman Han, I, thank you. I'm tracking, I think, much better where you're going. So I appreciate the clarity there. I think the intent of what we have here is to avoid the situation and to create checks and balances to make sure we then stop ourselves from the situation that you want to avoid. And that I would agree, right? We, I don't think any of us want a undue authorities given to unelected officials, right? Or folks who aren't accountable to the public. So what I want to see, Councilman Han, is, is there some of the language here that we can amend to make it very clear that the board are, they are advisory in nature, that's the intent, and I, and I think that's in here. But can we clean that up? And that make it very clear when we get to the section seven, right, the possibility of enforcement, that that is city staff, and that is city council that is reviewing the decisions. So I think, can we amend the language here to be very clear on the roles and responsibilities such that that scenario doesn't come to pass?
Yeah, I, you know what, we all have, we all have our opinions. And like I said, I have nothing against these guys. But, and the board is great. But they are an advisory board. And I've, with the past history that I've got on this council, whatever the board comes up with is probably going to be solid. I mean, we're going to vote on it. And that's, that's what I, that's all I'm saying. Like I said, I have nothing against these guys. I just think that, you know, we've, we've, we've lived this long without a board, you know. And the other thing is, 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 if, if we, if we have another, if we have a board that comes over and say this board takes over the trees, what's next? We're going to have another board. And because I'll tell you what, from when I got on the council to what we have now, we've had a lot of different, you know, a lot of growth in all this. How many boards, do you have a board for everything? So people are, you know what I mean? I mean, how many boards, where does it stop?
Yeah. So my understanding is that this is actually regenerating a board that had been in present, had been in function for quite some time.
But they had, but they had no, they had no power over the citizens. They had no more power, but they just took care of the, the Lander city trees.
So, so the preexisting tree board worked with the three ordinances that this is trying to combine. So, so I'm unclear in following your, your line of thought about it, because what I understand is, our previous tree board was working with the city for ordinance eight forty two, eight fifty four, and 10 15. And those three ordinances have been combined into this one ordinance. And so I, I'm not seeing where that.
I don't ever remember. I never remember going in, when I was on the tree board, I'd never remember going out and looking for trees inside the, we stayed over by the school. We were in the city park and, and we worked with that. We did go out into the, into the neighborhoods looking for trees.
So, so one thing I would say, if you can take a look at the section two, about the duties and responsibility, if there's language there, I think Councilmember Stubble made a good point. If, if within that, can you come up with, assuming it passes tonight, with revised language that we could amend to make it more clear within that, what this, what their duties and responsibility is? So that's section two of this.
I don't think they, I don't think they should be in, I don't, I don't think they should be in it. I don't think, that's what I'm saying. I don't think the tree board should be, I think we should do what we've been doing.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's my opinion. You go, all we have to do is vote on it. I'm just telling you what I think.
Great. Thank you.
That's it.
Well, Councilmember Cassidy, and then Councilmember Josh Han.
Yep.
All right. So I'm just trying to, I mean, this is getting crazy. So I'm trying to understand. So say these guys are out driving around, come to a corner, can't see around the bushes. So they're going to advise those bushes get trimmed back or taken out, because they can't see around it, correct? Is that, is that, or is this all just dead trees? Now, is this overhang over a public street? Is this, it's not in somebody's yard, it's just over, just clarification. I'm trying to figure this out. So now if the power company comes in, and they see trees around a power line, they come in and trim, trim the trees from around their power line, they don't send you a bill, right? So if the city wants to come in and cut somebody's trees because they don't like the way it looks overhanging a street, it shouldn't be on the public owner, even though it's their tree. Like, you're, you're telling, okay, so potentially kicking people out of their houses on a property down on proposia, it seems a little funky to me. Telling people what to do with their trees on their own property seems a little weird to me. You know, it's like, when do we stop? When do we stop taking people's, if you spend all this money on something, and you turn it into what you want? I understand what you're saying. If there's a big giant dead branch that could fall off and potentially wipe somebody out on the sidewalk, it would be a problem. But how many cases of that have we had in Lander? Because I don't recall any. I mean, I've seen vehicles, I've seen all that, you know, 15 years on the fire department, I don't recall a tree smashing anybody on the sidewalk. And if it's overhanging too low, the ones on Main Street, you watch a box truck drive down it, they're hitting the trees on Main Street, you know. So it's, there's a lot of potential, like it's somebody looking at a tree and saying they don't deem it safe. But I, I don't understand why we're telling people what they need to be doing. Well, I think what bothers me the most is saying, you don't cut your tree like we tell you to cut your tree, or we're going to cut it, and then we're going to charge you for it. Because we want to cut, not, it's, you're taking their, their voice away from them, it seems like, to me. Yeah. Yes, we did. John? That's not somebody's private property already. It's going for sale, right? It's for sale, correct? Yes, it is his property for sale.
Now, let's move, Councilmember Cassidy.
Just have a, kind of a line of reasoning questions. And again, I'm sorry, Lance, it might be aimed at you. I just looked to you as maybe the, somebody can reach out to somebody who knows the answers. So mechanisms that are currently in place, they allow for the city to manage public property, right?
Correct.
But they do not allow, or they do allow the city to advise and influence private property?
They do.
Okay. We're looking to additive, to add a board, which has been discussed, right? There's verbiage in there, and I apologize, I don't have in front of me. Do you know by chance how many arborists are in town who meet the very specifically written requirements within the document?
Yeah, we'll get you an exact number, but I
More than one.
More, I think, more than one.
Okay.
Yes.
So from reading it earlier today, John Smith, who has a problem tree on his property somewhere in town, is told he has a problem tree by somebody on that board. And then there's, how does that then turn into an arborist being selected to action that problem?
I believe this raid day would tell the city, you know, that they have a problem, and then the city would have to get involved with enforcement.
So are we talking about like a bid process for an arborist that's going to be part of the city's, like a dedicated relationship? Is this going to be simple or complex? Like, what does that look like?
I've dealt with this once. And this was a tree, I believe, at Cascade and Second Street. And it was just conversations with the landowner, like this is why this tree is unhealthy and where it's leaning, and it's going to fall on those power lines, and the power company can't take it down. And the landowner ended up finding somebody. So it went to the conversation piece with the landowner of an unhealthy tree leaning out in the right way. And so most of the time, we don't have time or want to enforce something like this. It's when it's a true hazard tree, looks like it's going to wipe out infrastructure. And some of this protection is for the franchise agreements that we reach with somebody like a power company, and then other utilities who are hanging their utilities on those trees as well. So corners and setbacks, those are handled differently. We've trimmed those most of the time. So we take it upon ourselves and alleys and right of ways. And to have clearances, that's a different code here that we're talking about for site distances and trimming around stop signs and corners. A lot of times, it's just, let's hop out, let's get that stop sign cut down, trim the branches away, and take care of those issues. So it's not going to the landowner saying, we would like you to do this. But if we're going to make a major improvement on their property, or a big tree has to come out, that's a discussion of, would you like to have us, you know, do this? We're not arborists. Or do you want the opportunity to probably make it look a lot better with your own property for a tree that's an obstruction or a problem within those specifications?
Because there's a brief time period in that verbiage. It's like 10 days?
Yeah, I think we look into it. It's, it's a short window.
Quite brief, right? And, and, you know, that was one of the things that stuck out to me, was that in, in cases of poor weather and, and overtaxed arborists.
Yeah.
You know, if they're, if they're running around town, making their money for the year, and we put a time limit on that, you know, do we have the flexibility to address that?
It seems pretty restrictive.
It does seem very restrictive, right? And, you know, we have plenty of people who travel the state to solve problems elsewhere, right? Are we, are we creating unintentionally, right, of course, unintentionally, we, right?
Yeah, I guess, you know.
Respective conditions, you know?
Dealing with our own trees. I mean, we had to do that over a six month period in order to get them on the ground with an arborist, so.
So I, I think my last question again, is on this one, is that, you know, if we're going to make a, if we're going to make a change, and if it's been drafted by somebody outside of the city to make a change, we're trying to solve a problem. Been, there's a lot of horsepower and a lot of really good effort put into that document to achieve a certain outcome. What are we trying to solve? What are we trying to solve? If it's just housekeeping, if it's just taking three documents, turning them into one, okay. If it's adding complexity, bureaucracy, authorities, layers of separation between homeowners or citizens here in the city, is that something else? You know, what, can somebody very clearly articulate, what is the problem that we are trying to solve? And that's kind of my last question.
Yep. So, so one thing I want to note, Councilmember Cassidy, so there's nothing set here that I'm, I'm trying to review that says anything about 10 days. There is, within the timeframe set. So, so that's not it. And in answer to the other question about what is it we're trying to achieve, this is cleaning up our ordinances. So as Councilmember Stubble stated, this isn't new information. It's some wordsmithing, but it has not changed the intent of what is currently existing on our books. So if there are concerns about who is financially responsible, this is not changing that. So if that's something we want to change, then we should come forward on the next reading with an amendment for that, about what that looks like. So that, that's my response to the question you've got. And Councilmember Stubble.
Thank you, Mayor White. You know, I think you're right. The problem we're trying to solve is we have three ordinances that are confusing. And so staff and volunteer advisory boards need to now, at this time, go through three and then try to decide, okay, if there's overlap, which one do we actually follow? So it is, it is a housekeeping, you know, an attempt to add clarity, and, and add clarity. And so I also want to say, while I have the mic on, Mayor, I think that there's some possibilities for us to be very clear in section seven, that that is not the board, that is, that is city staff. These are amendments I'll, I'll bring, I hope we have a second reading to consider these amendments, to clarify that the council has been and will continue to be solely volunteer advisory, and that they're not having conversations. They don't desire to have some of these hard conversations, right, with landowners. I'll point you to duties and responsibilities. They may offer guidance to property owners and share information upon request, right? When people say, come help me with this tree, then they're willing to go there. But if it comes down to an enforcement action, that's frankly, not a, that's not what they want to do. Who's on there right now? I can't imagine a future person wanting to, and we don't want them to be doing that. That needs to be accountable, that action's accountable to city staff. The mayor, with the council's approval, appoints members of this board. This board does not select its own membership. As with other, other committees, we do that. So that's a check and balance for us as well. And I think those are a few of the points that have been raised in debate that I wanted to just clarify. I think another option, Councilman Josh Han, that you brought up, that we could consider, we're budgetary, if we don't want property owners to have to take on the cost of, you know, yeah, a tree limit's going to land on a sidewalk at a school crossing and is a hazard to kids, right? Then we shouldn't decide if we want to make a budget allocation, the city does. Then we shouldn't decide if we wanna make a budget allocation, the city does that, and we, you know, Lance, I'd like to see, like, what is that, is that fifty thousand dollars a year? Is that sixty, is that, what's our limit of saying, hey, we actually, okay, we'll take that cost on, what are we gonna budget every year to have a kitty? And you don't need to answer that right now, that's maybe something we can look at for second reading. The laws we have on the books right now say it's at the property owner's expense, this ordinance mirrors that language. I'm hearing, maybe we wanna change that, so that's in our, we can debate that.
That's the purpose of amendments, uh, Councilmember Larson.
You know, Mayor, I, I did find something that refers to a timeframe here on seven D, it says if the property owner fails to comply within thirty days of the final order, the city will issue a citation, as outlined.
Thank you. Any more discussion, or can we call for the question for the first reading? Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, uh, it passes forty-two. Move on to the next item, uh, approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, granting a franchise to Visionary Communications LLC on behalf of itself and its affiliates, Visionary, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system, system in the city of Lander, Wyoming.
Did we do B?
Oh, sorry, I passed over that one, my bad. Thank you for catching that, flipped too many pages here. Item B approved, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven, amending Title Twelve, City Administrative Positions, Section twelve dash five dash five, compensation of officers and employees of the Lander Municipal Code. Can I get a motion in a second?
Make a motion.
Moved by Councilmember Josh Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any questions, discussion on this item? Okay, call for the question, Count, Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Now on to C, I won't repeat all of that, that I just said. Can I get a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Uh, any discussion on this? More questions? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And motion passes. Uh, item D, approve resolution thirteen sixty-four to amend the FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Get a motion in a second. So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Stubble and seconded by Councilmember Larson. Uh, any discussion or questions on this?
Uh, I just had a question on, uh, what some of these, uh, the expenditures were. We've got the general building inspector, uh, police streets, rodeo grounds, are these projects that's, that's lined up? Or is this just additional money that's going into those organizations?
They were just, um, additional monies going to the entire department, so they had a line item that had gone over. So we're just changing their total budget amount per that, that department. And so, most of it, you can see like the lower grant, they, that was quite a bit of money they came in, they, they offered a few, we, they paid for a few different grant items that made departments run over. So that's why we're shoring those accounts up. And this is last year's budget.
Does that, answer your question for you, Councilmember Larson?
Trying to figure that out, I think it did.
Any other questions?
I'm a bit confused, but you said it was last year's budget, it's already been received and allocated?
Right, we, what, normally what we do is, um, we do one budget amendment a year, just because it's costly to advertise, so we shore up all the accounts at the end of the year.
And this, we, we had, um, excess revenue that we hadn't been anticipating, so this is allocating it.
Is this normal, is this normal? So if you have excess revenue, but you've already made budgetary decisions?
Well, you all approve the checks that get spent each month, so, and in that financial tab, every month, there's a budget report that shows you where everybody's at and what departments are at. Um, but a lot of times at the end of the year, that's where we end up seeing where the, cause we're accrual base, um, we end up having departments that end up going over. So it's just the total line item. If you didn't wanna do a budget amendments, actually, there's municipalities that do, instead of doing a budget by department, all broken out, they just do general fund, one budget. So then they're never having to do budget amendments because they're not gonna run over in their general fund when they just do a line item. We're more transparent because we're doing it by department, so you can specifically see each department and what they're spending.
So we, we've, now apologize, I'm catching up here, so we've, we've received more than we anticipated.
Correct.
And we, and when, on that side of the ledger, so to speak, and on the other side ledger, we have identified the amount of money we want to spend, but we've received more, and the month, the excess that we've received, instead of saving it, paying debt, doing something else with it, we are allocating that to departments for them to spend over what they've already decided that they need to spend?
Actually, it's not really that way. We, in total, right now, we're sitting about nine hundred thousand dollars in excess for last year in the entire general fund budget. Um, each department, though, was allocated a specific amount of money at the beginning of the year. And then if they go over, we, we just recognize the unanticipated income to offset what that expense was. In total, we're, at the bottom line for the general fund, we're in excess, you know, of nine hundred thousand. We just have to, for the audit purposes, show that we shore up each of those accounts.
The, the if they go over part that you said, that's, that's allowed?
Pardon me?
The if they go over part that you just.
Right, right, so if, there's a financial, in the financial statement, one of the last pages, it's a budget to actual, and they actually, that's a generated within the financial statement. We have to show that we've recognized and picked up what budget, what monies come in, what we've spent, otherwise it's a write-up for me.
So, and, and those departments are allowed to go over their budgetary requirements?
Um, well, the, by line item, we're not specific to line item, we're specific to the bottom line item. And a lot of times they come and they talk about what they've gone, some things are unanticipated. I, I only do it once a year just because I'm cheap. I don't like to pay the advertising.
Yeah.
To put it in the paper every single time. You'll see other people put two lines in, and you'll see what we pay for advertising, thirty thousand dollars a year, to advertise one little transfer of a budget line item. So instead of doing it monthly, or, you know, most budgets don't run out until this part of the year. That's the last couple months of the year, when expenditures come in that they end up running over.
I think we're two slightly different perspectives, I think what Councilmember Cassidy, you're talking about is, um, department, various departments may go over their anticipated budget for the fiscal year. And to what extent is, is guidance provided on that? And I think, Sharie, what you're trying to explain is more on the, the reconciliation process. So I think, uh, the question is, so as department heads see that they're reaching their, um, their budget line item max, that we wanna make sure they're checking in with you to see that there will be additional revenue to cover that. So they're not, they're not, um, blindly going into a deficit spending. They did so knowing that there would be, uh, cause you already knew at that point that there was going to be additional revenues that could cover these needed expenses, I think is what you're trying to.
Right, that happens, and then when I'm reviewing the books, I'll find things that were coded incorrectly. So when I make those changes and code them to the correct department or the correct line item, that has a tendency to run line items over.
Is that, is that helpful for you? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
No. Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Next, approve resolution thirteen sixty-five, amending resolution twelve fifty-one to accommodate a change in project description for the Transportation Alternatives Program from the Wyoming Department of Transportation Alternatives Program, for the purposes of updating the construction plans for the Baldwin Creek South Ninth Street Complete Streets Project Award as CD two-three-five-one-three. We get, um, motion in a second, please, and then we can have our conversation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Josh Hahn. And Regine, can you fill us in on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, a direct request from YDOT in the management of our grant for that Baldwin Creek South Ninth. Uh, as they're looking at final plans, they said that their project description in the award contract doesn't meet the plans. So they ask us to go through this resolution process so that the council would know that our project description has changed from the, uh, contract award. And then we need a formal letter for them to change the contract award, so you'll see another contract in front of you that's amended contract to meet this project description.
Thank you for that. Questions for Regine? Seeing none, can we call for the question? Councilmember Jo- Josh Hahn.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Next, approve resolution thirteen sixty-six, amending job descriptions for Assistant Public Works Director and Police Chief Positions. Same thing, motion in a second, and we'll get more information.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larkin, Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. And Rochelle, can you fill us in on this?
The first job description, the Assistant Public Works Director, this is moving that position from non-exempt eligible for overtime to exempt. And some of the red line that you will see in their duties are things that he does, that are just being spelled out, that will help support that exempt status. Uh, the second one, uh, in the endeavor to start advertising for the permanent chief of police, I had the mayor review the description, she had a few changes, and as long as we were changing them, then I wanted it to, to also mirror some of our other job descriptions, adding a, uh, this position is subject to random drug testing, things of that nature. Also, I added that it's subject to the appointment process in the Lander Municipal Code, as well as the Wyoming State statute, so that people could understand that that's what that looked like. And it was also done with Sharie's job description for treasurer when we were anticipating. So any questions?
Any questions for that? Okay. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And that motion passes. Next, authorize the mayor to sign the County Ten Advertising Agreement. Get a motion, please, and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Larson.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Any comments, questions on this? It's something we've been doing for, for quite a while, uh, this is part of us being able to get information out to the public through this process.
Mayor, if I could add, this is one of those examples where we've, you know, approved a budget that would allow for this choice. I think this is transparency from the mayor's office and, um, making these kind of expenditures, so, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, Mayor. I think, would it be possible to do an explanation on some of these, uh, ordinances? On County Ten where people are actually looking, cause I don't know, a lot of people are going on the city website to look up ordinances, if they, cause some, some people don't even know about them. But you know, it's like the tree board one, you know, twenty-five dash six, uh, two twenty-five dash six, like if there was an explanation going out to the public where people could actually read it and understand it.
Yeah, great idea.
You know, a little more, uh, I guess it would be transparency.
Yeah. Yep, another opportunity to educate our, our public, yeah, good idea.
So how much does that cost us on, I mean, uh, we've got advertising, and then each time we, Brandon, I'm just curious how expensive that is?
So, uh, my understanding, looking at this, um, so we get up to three sponsored ad, uh, basically, um, articles each month. Um, and the total is five thousand annually for it. So if we wanted.
Three articles a month.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. Next, approve representative and fee agreement between the city of Lander and Adam Phillips for legal representation in the pending Board of Adjustments Appeal. And we'll get a motion in a second, and then we'll have Rochelle fill us in.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Josh Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. And Rochelle, I think we'll want some info for you for this one.
It's, it's my understanding that, um, representation in the district court on the pending appeal from the Board of Adjustments decision is not covered in city attorney Adam Phillips's contract. So if the council would like him to represent the Board of Adjustments in the city in that matter, then they would need to hire him pursuant to a separate agreement to do that. I did ask him for that document, and he did not provide me with one before he was unavailable. So if the council wanted to pursue, pursue that representation, they could vote on that today. Something along the lines of at his normal rate of, of charging, whatever that's done. In the past, you've done this before.
Normal hourly rate.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Great.
So do we have something hanging fire out there with the Board of Adjustments? I thought that that was, uh,
So.
Taken care of when they, when they approved that last, uh.
That, so this gets into some tricky, um, tricky territory, so, uh, I know you're not our official legal representation, uh, Rochelle, but you do have a J D. So, uh, the tricky part is, uh, we had a conversation, an executive session about a potential litigation, um, that had been filed, and we're required, uh, by law to have some, I don't remember the exact appropriate legal term for it, but we, we need to file a response for that, and the decision was that we would, um, hire Adam Phillips as our attorney in that, uh, position. It's unknown at this point if it's going to move forward or not, but we still have to file that documentation. Correct. Uh, we've not heard that it's been resolved. Yep. Any other questions? Okay, call for the question, Councilmember.
Mayor, I think I'd prefer to amend this, just because we don't have the fee agreement in hand. And I think, uh, Clerk Fontaine suggested some language there, so, um, let's see, without Adam present, I would move that we amend this motion, that we approve the representative, uh, and fee agreement at the, uh, existing hourly rate we have with our attorney, uh, between the city of Lander and Adam Phillips for legal representation in the pending Board of Adjustments Appeal.
Great, so amendment by Councilmember Stubble, can I get a second?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. So let's vote on the amendment, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, the amendment passes, and now let's vote on the, the amended approval, and we'll start, uh, with you, Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
That motion passes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I didn't mean to cut you off. All right, um, uh, next, award bid, easy zero five two five for two twenty twenty-six all-wheel-drive Dodge Drangler Pursuit Vehicles to low bidder Sheridan Motors, in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars per vehicle, for a total amount of eighty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award and purchase agreement for the same. Motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Larson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Josh Hahn. Any questions on this? Councilmember, uh, Dan Hahn.
I just had a comment, um, if we paid fourteen hundred and twenty-six dollars more, we could have bought it in Lander. Build, buy Lander, build Lander.
It, it was a challenge, and we're obligated to go with a low bidder, which is challenging.
I thought that we changed that way back when, that we didn't have to go with a low bidder. I think we might, if you look for it, we might have language, because we got caught up in a, uh, in a contractor situation, and we decided, I thought we moved, uh, a little bit of language around, so. and we decided, I thought we moved a little bit of language around so we had flexibility. But anyway, I just.
Call for the question. Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay. And that motion passes. And I will say, add along here to the night, what I learned on the DUI Task Force, they have lovely pickup. They accelerate quite well. Got to see it in action. Okay. We need to have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn to executive session.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Stubble. We get a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dan Han. We will adjourn, oh, first, we got a vote. Councilmember Josh Han.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Hey. Thank you.
If you keep your mind, if the water pumps are open, we might keep that on. There are years we have to go pretty late and all. I think there's. George wants to smoke in a traffic.
That makes a little more sense.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's outside, he's not, that's what he's talking about. He should have all. Well, and I guess like, like, so we, we don't have a problem shutting down if there's.
Yeah.
More advanced notice. And so I guess the question is, do we want to shut it there? Do we want to shut it down? If you can give me a couple of years, we get to. Jordan Hill will probably. Get up a couple of years and use it up.
Do. It makes sense a little bit now. You don't want this struggling.
It, it might be, it might be doing this, I mean, like, let me, let me check. Or that's a lot of stuff. It might make more sense with now, on, as since, I mean, since the length of the pump is off so long, it kind of dry our channel. So we're having to put a lot of water that way, try to suck it back up, like, like it's been over weeks. And I, I don't know if it's possible. Yeah, just because it's, it's got, it's got so bad channel. So we're already pushing a lot of water. It may not take much to shut that spurt on, like, malls or places that is. It's got a pretty good share of water. So it, so it might make sense for us to just rotate.
So what makes sense after you're nice, you know, try to do. I.
Which one? Oh, on, on, by the softball. Ninth Street. It's. Oh, yeah. Sorry, I got to do more than two.
I, I. The question is, I was, maybe I'm not going to say easy, like, oh. They feel like that's, you know. Right. In the old. They need to sit.
Right, and I don't know that spurt until we get that spurt, like, down here. Sometimes. Sure, but wouldn't, I would mind on the reason to charge that by. He comes out and. I, I would love for that to happen.
Okay.
We, we've got out.
Do we? One of ours, please.
Do it.
Yeah. He's coming. He needed to use the. Just one minute. We have a quorum. Can we go? Yeah.
So we need to, Councilmember Larson will join us in just a second, but we need a motion to adjourn executive session. And second, so we can return to this venue as a voting body.
Mayor, so moved.
Great. Moved by Councilmember Stubble.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Call for the question, Councilmember Josh Han.
Yeah, he's coming.
Yes.
We have a quorum, so. Yes.
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 Okay. And now we can go back to the last item. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign real estate purchase agreement for a .76 acre tract of land located in southwest one, four, southwest one, southwest quarter, southwest quarter, section eight, township 33 North, range 99 West. Get a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Dan Han.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. And so one point of conversation for this is that the payment for this property, should it be successfully completed, is going to be covered 100% by a federal grant that we have. There's no tax, no local dollars will be spent for it. Any comments, questions from council? No? Seeing none, call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes. And lastly, a motion in a second to adjourn.
Mayor?